... agenda tonight, we have some minutes that were emailed and we have some budget amendments that encompass pages three through 12 of your packet. Anybody have any questions, concerns, or discussion about tonight's consent agenda? Motion to approve?
I'm willing to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Great. Very good. Tonight's a very special night, and again, I'm so glad that you all are with us tonight. Point, I think, hand this over to Cliff, Town Manager, to get it kicked off.
I'm actually going to hand it off to the police chief.
Okay, that's fine. Just thought that was the right thing to do.
Thank you. It is very nice to have folks here that we can recognize for the years of service, new folks coming on. We're very fortunate and we're getting very close to having a full staff, so things are good.
Chief Cole.
Thank you. Yes, I'm about ready to play the lottery. We are almost full staff. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce our newest police officer and have her officially sworn in. Hannah, I want to give you, come on up here, give you a little bit of bile, a little background first. She was born and raised in the Outer Banks. Her parents, along with several generations, you can come right over here. I'll protect you. Her parents, along with several generations, way back, have lived here since the 1700s. Hannah has also, she left the Outer Banks at the age of 19 to travel. She's lived in places such as Alaska, New York, Miami, and most recently, Atlanta. She was in Atlanta for about 28 years, where she gave birth to and raised six kids, where she now has three grandchildren. She moved back to the Outer Banks in July of last year and is engaged to Ben Spurrell. She lives in Kill Devil Hills currently. She was a stay-at-home mom for 26 years while becoming a seamstress in her community. Before moving to the Outer Banks, she was running her own catering business in Atlanta, and she decided to follow her dream of becoming a police officer. And she wouldn't want to live anywhere else, and she loves horseback riding and kayak fishing. And I will tell you, even with the six kids and everything she's gone through, she put a lot of the cadets at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy to shame. So I say hurrah. So it's my privilege to officially swear in. Never thought this would happen, did you? I told you it would eventually. Ben, you want to hold the biographer?
Are you ready? Please state your name. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, to be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, that you will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of the state, that you will not be influenced in any manner or count of bias or prejudice, and that you will faithfully and partially execute the duties of your office as a law enforcement officer according to the best of your skill, ability, and judgment. So help you God. Excellent. Welcome.
Yay!
Next, I want to introduce to you our new Deputy Chief of Police for the Town of Southern Shores, Kelly Jones. Come on up, Kelly. Just a little bit of information on Kelly. Kelly grew up in Camden County with his parents, Joe G. Jones and Mary Lou Jones, who is in the audience, and two brothers, Kevin and Keith Jones. He graduated from Camden County High School in 1988. God, he's still just a kid. Then he attended Elizabeth City State University, 1992, BS Criminal and Criminal Justice. After completing the ECSU, he attended Basic Law Enforcement Training at the College of the Abilmar. He comes from a family of law enforcement. His dad was actually the sheriff of Camden County. His brother Kevin is a retired North Carolina Highway Patrol and is the current sheriff of Camden County. His brother Kevin retired from, or I'm sorry, Keith, retired from the NAGCSD Police Department, and he is currently the director of our new Basic Law Enforcement Academy here in COA. Kelly was married to Denise Jones in October of 2003, and they have two children. One is running around the beaches and issuing parking tickets and stands right back there, Two fine boys. His other son worked for us for two or three years, too. Fine gentleman. Let's see. Both Dylan and Garrett Jones are his sons. After years of moving from state to state and other parts of the northeastern North Carolina, they finally reached their objective and they were able to move back to Southern Shores in 2015. Both boys graduated from First Flight High School and are attending college. Dylan is at ECSU Aviation, and Garrett is attending COA, and he's doing criminal justice and also welding. After almost 32 years in law enforcement, Kelly is excited to join the Southern Shores Police Department and to continue his career. Just to give you an idea of his work history, NAGCSD Police Department, police officer from 93 to 96. Then he worked for the probation and parole office from 96 to 97. Then he was a Camden County Sheriff's Office Deputy from 97 to 2000. I think that was probably something you all had to do, right? All three of you? Then he worked with North Carolina Alcohol and Law Enforcement as an agent from 2000 to 2002. And then his latest was the United States Marshal Service, where he was a Deputy United States Marshal from 2002 until he retired just recently in 2025. He's worked and lived in Cheyenne, Wyoming, Alexandria, Virginia, Norfolk, Greenville, and Elizabeth City, and he does reside in the Town of Southern Shores. So I would like to introduce you and welcome you to our new Deputy Chief, Kelly Jones. I look for really exciting things with Kelly. As you know, I was a little busy last week, but I told him usually we just unlock cars and stuff like that. Big guy. Now I'd like to introduce you to Darrell, Corporal Darrell Brickhouse. We're here to recognize 20 years. Don't seem possible, does it, Darrell? Darrell was here when I came. So he's, what can I say about Darrell? Darrell is the type of police officer that you would want, covering you, covering your back. Darrell, as you know, was off for several months, but I got to tell you, the first day he came back, it was like he never left. He's just a good, smart, street-smart cop, and you wouldn't want to mess with him either. So he's just a good boy. So we're proud to recognize him for his 20 years of service with the Town of Southern Shores Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
See you in a little bit.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to our staff reports. We'll hear from our Deputy Town Manager and Planning Director, Mr. Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of council. With respect to July permits, we issued 51 permits. They consisted of nine zoning permits, 18 building permits, and 24 trade permits. The total amount of fees that the department collected in July was $18,319.42. With respect to the Historic Landmarks Commission, they're going to be holding a meeting this month on August 26th here in the Pitts Center at 9:00 AM. They'll be considering an application from the owner of 39 Ocean Boulevard to designate that structure and probably the property with it as a historic landmark. We haven't had one of those in a while, so that's exciting. Also, the Planning Board will also be meeting this month. They'll be meeting on August 18th at 5:00 o'clock here in the Pitts Center, and they'll be considering a ZTA from town staff to amend or to add a new section 1-14 to establish requirements for reconsideration of disapproved development and amendment requests, and to amend Town Code Section 36-414A to establish application and formatting requirements for proposed zoning text amendments. Any questions?
Thanks, Wes. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go back to Chief Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I owe you two monthly reports. First one will be June. And as you can see, we had 1,613 calls for service compared to last year at this time. That's about an increase of 221. Most of those were business checks, property checks. There was an increase in those. And also, we had a considerable amount of extra patrols in certain specific designated areas. Let's see. We had 16 incidents, which were actually reported crimes, for a total of 29 offenses. We had eight criminal arrests, which included, as you can see, five DWIs. Eight were traffic-related, two assaults, one drug equipment, for a total of 18 charges altogether out of the eight criminal arrests. Let's see. Officers conducted 77 traffic stops, and out of those 77, they issued 18 written citations and another 65 warning citations. Local ordinances, our Community Resource Officer Garrett Jones, 10 parking in a right-of-way, 62 failed a display, total of 72 local ordinance violations. We actually had 12 reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of June. Any questions on June? July, had 2,188 calls for service. We had 20 incidents for a total of 42 total offenses. As you can see, we had two assaults, damaged a property, seven were drugs, four DWIs, driving while intoxicated, four for drug paraphernalia, seven fraud, two larceny, and one for weapons. We had 14 criminal arrests, month of July, two for the weapons, six for driving while intoxicated, larceny, 10 drug arrests, four for the drug equipment, and one was a domestic, and we had one assault, for a total of 39 charges. Officers conducted 204 traffic stops. They issued 51 written citations, another 135 warning citations for the month of July. Under the written citations, that was a total of 70 charges. As you can see on the warnings, those were 156 total charges. Some of the highlights of that were equipment violations, 25 for speeding, unsafe move, 33 were for stop signs. And I have a breakdown that I'm going to go over here in a second with you so that you'll have an idea of what the officers have been doing. For extra patrols, for the overtime that we sign up for, just to give you an idea of what they've been doing, above and beyond what the officers are doing when they're actually working. July 4th, do you have that one? Okay. July 4th, and this is from 9:00 AM till 7:00 PM. And this is additional officers coming in, and their specific duty is to keep an eye on the roads and enforce the traffic violations and that. And then if there's hot calls, then they back up the other officers. But they had a total of, for July 4th, there was 75 calls for service for that day. And this is just between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And the officers conducted 13 traffic stops, and a lot of the citations that I just mentioned in these two reports are actually covered in that report. July 11th, another weekend, same timeframe, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, they handled 53 calls for service, and at the same time, they also conducted six different traffic stops, and they issued five violations for, most of those were for speeding and stop signs. July 12th, same timeframe, 86 calls for service. The extra duty, they stopped 15 vehicles, issued 15 citations. Traffic stops totals were 25 and another 11 citations. And then for July 25th, same timeframe, there were 27 traffic stops. They handed out six violations, and then they also had another three for stop sign violations. A lot of those were on South Dogwood at the three-way intersection of East and North Dogwood as well. Now, July 22nd, we had what was called a saturation patrol, and that was involved all of the counties, and they go all over the county, and it was county-wide specific. What I can tell you is that Southern Shores officers, there were seven participating, and one was a ride-along that we are sponsoring through the Next Academy. Traffic and criminal violations that were addressed overall, there were 83. That's county-wide. Traffic and criminal violations addressed by the Southern Shores Police Department were 39. Forty-seven percent of them were by our officers. I'm proud to say, and that's not to take anything away from the other agencies. They all did a heck of a job. They really did. For the Southern Shores Police Department, drugs that were seized, fentanyl, crack, unknown white powder, possibly cocaine, and on two different stops, marijuana. And these folks from Virginia just can't get it. It's still illegal in North Carolina. Violations to note from the Southern Shores Police Department that they addressed were DWIs, we seized a vehicle, driving with a license revoked because of previous driving while intoxicated, open container of alcohol in the passenger area, possession of Schedule II substance, two counts, possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of marijuana, possession of marijuana paraphernalia, no operator's license, speeding, and no seatbelt. Our K9 request, we had three requests that led to the open container of alcohol, fentanyl, crack, cocaine, and an unknown white powder that we suspect and probably was tested that may be cocaine, as well as drug paraphernalia. And then county-wide, there were four DWIs, 29 speeding, three-seat belt, seven no operator license, seven that did not have a registered vehicle. And then they had 23 that were under the all-other traffic offense, and then they had eight that were drug-related, and then again, the one driving while intoxicated, which we seized the vehicle, for a total of 83 charges. All the agencies that participated were Dare County Sheriff's Office, NAGCSD Police Department, Kill Devil Hills Police Department, Kitty Hawk Police Department, Southern Shores PD, Duck PD, and the North Carolina State Highway Patrol. Only other thing I want to report on, because I was off enjoying my granddaughter for the last month, Coffee with a Cop. It was held Friday, June 27th, and these are just a few of the pictures. Our officers enjoyed it. I think all the people enjoyed it. It's a really nice location. Not sure who did the work over there. They did a really nice job, though. But this young lady, we tried to recruit her. She is actually a police officer in New Jersey, and her husband's in another one of these, and we tried to recruit him. He's actually a doctor, an ER doctor in New Jersey. But they may, I don't know. We tried. What I can tell you is that it was a success. I can also tell you that we'll probably not do it again in the summer, because it was really, really hot. And we appreciated everything that Shores Roastery did for us. They were very, very, made everything convenient for us. The officers enjoyed themselves, and I thank most of the folks there. But we'll look at doing something like that maybe in the fall sometime.
Good. That's good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
Chief.
To ask you a question.
I know that you can't comment on this in depth, but could you give us some idea of the involvement of our Southern Shores Police in that shooting in Avalon?
Yeah. First, it was tragic. You know, my heart goes out for everyone, including the shooter and their families. What I can tell you is that, you know, one of the things is it's a wake-up call, especially to our officers, because you don't want to become complacent. In a beautiful place where we live, it can change that quick. And unfortunately, you know, it did. But I will tell you, I commend every one of our officers, and I was able to keep up with the young boys, but we were very blessed that, I'm going to tell you, without the LPRs, may not have found the guy. But I'm going to tell you that we were very blessed that we had as many officers working as we did. And actually, Sergeant Brinkley, he wasn't even supposed to be working. He just stopped in before he went on vacation to fix his, download his body camera. So I threw him a vest, and he took a gun, and we all went. And as it turned out, we were very fortunate. When they hit the LPRs, we had six of our officers, including myself, that were right there, and we stopped them at the new EMS station and took them out at gunpoint. And we're very fortunate that it went the way it did. It could have went really bad for him. Again, I got to say that, you know, I've been doing this for 40-some years, and I will tell you that if you've never been in a kind of thing like that or a war or something, I mean, all the departments down here, including EMS and fire, they did a heck of a job. Because unless you've been there, done that, it's so chaotic. And for even the dispatchers to just keep their cool and their calm, because you know over the years, if you come out screaming and yelling on the radio, first of all, it gets everybody's adrenaline pumping, and you have no idea what they're saying. So my compliments to everybody on the beach. They all handled themselves well. They really did.
That's great. Absolutely. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Big, big sense of gratitude for all that you all did. Since that's... Did you want to talk about e-bikes, Chief, or no? Chief Cole? Do you want to talk about e-bikes or put that off till later?
I'm very good.
Okay, real quick, sorry. And I think a few people want to ski-dattle, which is fine. Thanks for coming, guys. Yeah, it's a good ski-dattle time.
Get off the sidewalk.
If you must.
What you have before you is North Carolina Senate Bill 576. Our Chiefs Association, along with quite a few, Bobby Haynick and some of the other folks have been pushing for this. Unfortunately, it never made it out of the short session, so it still sits in the Senate. But as you can see at the bottom of this, it would really give local authority to you as a municipality to be able to create some local ordinances with a little bit's teeth, to designate and define and decide who, what, where, when, where the bikes, electric-assisted bikes and everything, are allowed to participate. And also, which is something that I had hoped for a long time, but now they've actually classified, so they have three classes. You know, some of the places where I used to work, they had ABC, and it classified it depending upon the size of the motor and the speed and that and this. I'm going to tell you that we had a, I don't want to call it a chase, a couple of, I don't even remember how long ago it was we were there. One of our sergeants, 10 minutes before he was supposed to go home, an e-bike went flying by him, and he literally, this thing was pulling away from the police guard. Forty-eight miles an hour is what he clocked him at, on South Dogwood. No helmet.
No helmet.
Got to the intersection, it turned right onto East Dogwood, and there's no way that he was going to make that. He went end over end and went into Mr. Barkley's front yard.
Oh, boy.
But he was intoxicated enough that he was pretty limber, so he just...
Bounced and rolled.
Pretty much. But he had a heck of a gash on his leg that had already been bandaged, so he had wrecked somewhere else several hours earlier. He was 20 years old. We impounded the bike and took him to the hospital. But, you know, they're just, e-bikes, they're just a bad thing just waiting to happen if we don't get a handle on it. So I can tell you that I know that the Chiefs Association of the State of North Carolina is going to push this again to try and get it through the Senate. We'll see. Unfortunately, for right now, it's the same as it was before. Anywhere a bicycle is allowed, an electric-assisted bike is allowed too, and that includes the sidewalk. It's just, it's the statute. Nothing else we can do about it. It scares me when I see somebody's flying by, especially if they're carrying a surfboard, and you've got a mother with a stroller coming the other way. It's not good. It really isn't. But I would entertain any comments or questions.
And it's younger and younger kids riding them.
It is.
And the scooters.
It is. And that's correct. And you're supposed to be at least 16.
Yeah.
But if this ever becomes law, then we can change it and make anybody that, you know, whatever age level, but they don't even require them to wear a helmet.
Yeah.
I mean, it just makes no sense to me at all. So hopefully, before something really bad happens, they'll do the right thing.
I'm an avid cyclist, and I'm out there quite a bit on the roads, and sometimes I just ride a hybrid bike down to Duckwoods Country Club to work out. I've almost been hit twice now. One almost head-on, and then the other day, I was just out for a long, long walk, and, you know, little scooters with young kids on them come flying up. They don't announce themselves.
Right.
So, you know, you get startled. And of course, nobody was wearing a helmet, too. They got flip-flops on. So as a neurologist says, you know, if you, we can't impress upon parents to, you know, wear a head wear head protection, wherever they refer to those people as, uh, organ donors.
Right.
So, uh, in the meantime, before this passes, can, or would the town consider regulating some of the use of e-bikes or, or looking for best practices in other communities? I know some jurisdictions say if it's an e-bike, but it doesn't have paddles, you have to be on the road. You can't be on a sidewalk or a multi-use path.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have to go by the state statute.
Yeah.
And it specifically defines what an e-bike is and it's a bicycle.
Or can we partner with the schools to say, hey, look, this is if you have an e-bike?
I'll tell you where it starts. It starts with the parents.
Oh, yeah.
Get some responsibility and, you know, don't just hand them. To me, it just makes no sense to hand someone something that can do 20, 30 miles an hour.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of something to do in the interim.
Yeah.
While we wait for the state legislature.
Yeah, but unfortunately we've tried and we really, we have no authority to do anything like that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Let's all just adopt some common sense perhaps?
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Chief Limbacher. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. So for the month of July, um, pretty simple report started on the, actually our calls really started on the 4th with a long standby for crews all day with Duck Parade beginning in the morning. And then we had several medical calls sprinkled through the day, but ended up with a fire in the trash can for fireworks. So that's typical, but luckily it was out on the streets, so that was good. Anyway, uh, so one fire, and that was actually in Duck. It was the pool deck, someone had put fireworks in that trash can as well at Four Seasons. So, uh, one natural vegetation fire was actually a lightning strike of a big pine tree, which was actually going pretty good for a pine tree, but, uh, one dumpster fire. 44 EMS calls, one motor vehicle accident with injuries, one without. Search for person in water, that was two of our boat calls this month. One was search for a person in Duck and the other one was a capsized boat in the marina, which they called in as actually in the creek, but it was in the marina. So one hazardous condition, five of our beach wheelchair programs, one of our signs, one smoke detector service, one public service, 13 cover-up standbys, two dispatch canceling route, 10 fire alarms and two severe weather for a total of 87 last month, which is exactly what it was last year. So all was good. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all you do. Oh, Mark has a question, sorry.
I know we had the transition. How was volunteers?
Uh, I think things were pretty much status quo. I think that everyone knew it had to happen and, uh, I don't think it was a surprise by anybody. I think they all expected it and supported it. So, um...
Nobody's quit?
No, no, there was...
You've added 10?
Really, there was, there was no animosity at all. I think everybody is on the same page and understood that, you know, we're charged with providing fire protection. And if we have to do it with a paid crew versus volunteers eventually, then that's what we're going to have to do. So...
Well, what's the status in hiring?
Uh, we're in the process. We're going to hire, or we're going to, uh, interview three more on Thursday. And hopefully after that Cliff and I will get together and hopefully make some job offers in the near future. So. All right?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next we'll hear from our town manager, Cliff Ogden.
Thank you. I just have two things tonight, both, um, really updates. We're just for your information, the, the town, uh, and the town of Duck both share the same contractor for Ocean Rescue Service. We have separate contracts, but it's the same contractor. Duck's contract will expire at the end of this year. So they're going out, putting RFP out, um, to get proposals for the next contract. Our, um, contract doesn't expire until the following year. But we're still going to go out to bid at the same time that Duck does. It's, it's, it's just, I guess for years, it's been Surf Rescue providing the service to both towns. And so even though we have another year on our contract, I think what will happen is if Surf Rescue were not to land the next contract, then we would, um, likely, uh, renegotiate our contract. I don't think the present contractor is going to want to do Southern Shores without Duck. So it's conceivable we could be looking at, uh, a new contractor, um, for next year. So I just, when you see that RFP and it says the town of Duck and the town of Southern Shores, that's why we're, we're covered for another year, um, and we'll continue to be covered. The other thing was some good news we received last week that, uh, we have received, um, a North Carolina Resilient Coastal Community, uh, Grant. It's through the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management. There are four phases of this program. Phases one and two are what we've been awarded for. And the, the primary deliverable are community-specific resilient strategies and accompanying project portfolio that identifies and ranks potential resilient improvements. Phase three and four will, uh, give us the funds to pay for any of those projects that we think are, uh, valuable to construct. So we, what, uh, DCM does is they'll, they'll take applications from, um, uh, contractors that want to be associated with the work, that want to partner. We've been partnered with CPE, uh, who you'll hear from Ken later. And so that, the $70,000 award will go to pay the consultant, uh, to do the work. And the work looks at vulnerabilities on the sound side, on the oceanfront, sea level rise, saltwater intrusion, uh, intercepted tanks, all, all kinds of things that the, the public may, um, decide are, um, priorities. So we'll be starting that program soon, uh, and see where it leads.
Excellent.
Thanks, Coach. Robert Hobbs is our attorney tonight. Good evening, sir. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, just to report that we're continuing to assist the town manager and the fire chief and the transition matters dealing with the fire department. And, uh, but there's certainly a light at the end of the tunnel. But we've certainly enjoyed working on that project for you. That's all I have. No, sir, any questions?
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have general public comment. We have a few folks, um, signed up to speak to us tonight. So when you come up, if you've never done this before, just come up to the podium, sell, tell us your name, where you live, and you get three minutes to speak to the town council. First on the list is Mr. Jimmy Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Jimmy Pierce. I live here in Southern Shores at 47 Cypress, have been for over 20 years. I just wanted to come before y'all tonight and introduce myself. I am your candidate for sheriff of Dare County, uh, for the upcoming 2026 election. I've been in law enforcement, uh, over 40 years. I started out in Bert Keefe County, which is where I'm from. I had a small police department there, little town called Orlando, North Carolina. Then went to Hertford County where I was a deputy sheriff, uh, Hertford County Sheriff's Office. Then moved on a few years later, came down here, uh, worked for Sheriff Bert Austin, who I have to say was one of the finest men I've ever worked for in my life and never been associated with. Worked for him for five years, uh, which time I took a job with the, uh, North Carolina Alcohol Law Enforcement Division as a special agent. I worked with them for 20, about 21 and a half years. I retired in 2014 with 30 years of service. I immediately went to work with NAGCET Police Department because I wasn't ready to retire yet. I was 48 years old. I've been with NAGCET Police Department now for 11 years. Uh, I do a little bit of everything there, uh, from ordering equipment, working on equipment, researching equipment, I run the firing range. I answer only to the chief and whatever he needs me to do, I take care of. I've always wanted to be the sheriff, always wanted to run for sheriff and I'm going to do it. I'm not going to have any regrets and later on in life, so I wish I had done this. I'm like, I'm, I'm going to do this. And how cool would it be for the sheriff to be from Southern Shores? I have, uh, done everything in law enforcement you could, you could ever hope I want to do or some of them. Some of it I haven't really wanted to do, but I had to do. I've, I've investigated everything from homicides to, uh, sex crimes to, uh, I was on a federal drug task force. I was sworn with the, uh, Federal Bureau of Investigation for about seven years on a OSADEF, which is Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. I was coastworn with both with the state and the FBI task force. I have, like I said, I have conducted just about every type of investigation that you can think of. I worked patrol, I've worked for two different sheriff's offices. I'm the man for the job and I would appreciate any support y'all could give me. If you'd like to know more, you can visit my Facebook page. It's Jimmy Pierce for Dare County Sheriff on Facebook. Uh, thank you very much. And like I say, have any questions, please, please get up with me. I'd be glad to talk to you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on our list is Connie Seraphin.
Good evening. I'm Connie Seraphin, 21 East Dogwood, and I have two comments. I understand tonight there's going to be discussion about doing beach nourishment again and that the town may be asked for a larger financial, um, commitment than we were previously. And I don't really think we need to do the nourishment. We have planted a lot of grass. The dunes are very stable and have gotten much larger. And at least at my part of the beach, it's, it's great. We have a very nice, we have a very nice beach. That was my first comment. My second one is I made the mistake Saturday, that day that we all were like, what is happening? Of walking on, um, Ocean Boulevard where I'm lucky, I'm still here to be able to talk to you. It was a racetrack. Forget the 25, that was like maybe a suggestion. So my, I, a few, uh, maybe years ago, we were talking about sidewalks. Ocean Boulevard really needs a sidewalk. You cannot walk anytime, not just crazy Saturday. On that road, there's no shoulder. There's sometimes a gap like, you know, six inches from the pavement to the sand. There are areas where you cannot walk on the sand because there are bushes and garbage cans and everything else. So I don't know if there's a consideration to do sidewalks again, but I think Ocean Boulevard is a place where we really need a sidewalk on both sides of the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Next and last signed up for tonight is Guard Skinner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council people. Uh, my name is Guard Skinner. I live at 151 Clamshell. We moved here in, uh, oh, two, I, we purchased in oh, three. I'm a, and I'm a regular beach user. I surf every day. I ran the beach for 20 years, every morning. I'm out there all the time. Basically, I sent an email to Cliff, who I've known for a long time, about the, uh, the behavior of the last nourishment. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to sway anything here. I just want to give you the perspective of, I was in the ski industry for a long time and you want to look at the quality of your product. And if I could draw a picture on there, I would, but it'd probably take up most of my time. But, uh, basically what's happened with the nourishment and, you know, there are positives and negatives, obviously. The dunes are great. They've also grown in height because, uh, if you look at all the new walkovers that are being built, you guys can talk to Joel, you know, we're very well protected down here. I, I think that our houses are as safe as anybody's in Corolla's. We're always really safe too. But we're looking really good. But as that dry sand was dumped on the beach and then it's continued to kind of circulate and everything, it's pushed the water line farther from that dune out into deep water. Now, if any of you have been in the water this year, we have a channel between the water line and the outer bar, which is about eight feet deep. Okay? I had to pull my aging neighbor in the other day, tried to swim across it. It was, it was a no-go. Basically, we've changed the behavior of that near shore zone. So when we moved here in oh, three and we're in the water all the time, I raised two kids down there. Basically you had a shallow near shore zone that then had a trough. The trough was, you know, thigh deep, waist deep, and then it would go into the outer bar. Now what we have is we have a very steep drop off. That sandbars come out and it's almost like a seawall. It goes down and it's eight feet right away. So the kids are in, it's knee deep, basically then they're over their heads. And if you look at the way the kids are playing down there now, you see more kids put the semi out. You see more of them in life jackets. Nobody can really go in the water. They can't boogie board close in. We haven't had a surf lesson taught in Southern Shores since the nourishment because there's no shallow near shore zone. So what I asked Cliff is I'm not saying do it, don't do it. What I'm saying is look at the quality of the product. The product down there right now, as far as house protection is fantastic. It's great. The, the dunes are beautiful. Yeah, thank you very much for that. But as far as what our product is, which is getting people in the water, having fun, having a safe family vacation where young kids and old people can play in water. It, it's really kind of a negative right now. And if we pile more sand down there, we're going to move that water line farther from the dune. So we will be in even deeper water. Right now, eight feet, that's a, that's deep water. Most people can't swim. You know, I mean, we all say we can swim, but you can't swim. And I, I fear for that. If you remember after the nourishment down here, we had a lot of drownings. Our last two throwdown surf contests have been a mess because of the shore break. So my, my hope would be that we look at alternatives before we just pile more dry sand down there. I don't, I don't think that's the right move for, for our guests and the quality of our product. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Is there anyone who didn't sign up who has now moved to speak to us? Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to new business. Number four. Our friends from Coastal Protection Engineering. Mr. Ken Wilson. Welcome, Ken. And this is on page 13 in your book, and I think someone printed us a new version and left it here for us. I didn't do much of an introduction, Ken. Are you just going to handle that on your own?
I'm just going to jump right in.
Sorry.
No, no problem. No problem. All right, um, so the, the primary, uh, the primary objective tonight is to kind of update you. I think the last time I was up here was December or November, one of the meetings right before the end of the year. We were talking about, um, the monitoring that we had done in the summer of 2024, uh, and the performance of the beach up until that point in time. And so back in early June, uh, our crews went ahead and did the same surveys we do every year, have updated those analysis. And that's really what, that's really the focus of what we want to talk about a little bit tonight. Uh, and then we're, as we'll go through some tables, I'll try to, uh, explain to you what these numbers mean, put them in some context that, that, uh, that y'all, you know, that can, can relate to, so to speak. We'll start talking more about the performance of the project and talk a little bit more about, um, you know, how we move forward, what moving forward might look like for the, for, for future projects. So just a real brief overview, um, I think it's really important to understand, it's, it's very important for us to understand what we're doing here with the project. Councilwoman Sherlock mentioned that she was at the Kitty Hawk Pro, or the Kitty Hawk Town Hall last night. Saw one of my colleagues present last night and was, you know, she said there was, it was interesting how different the focus was on what the goals and objectives of the Kitty Hawk project were compared to the Southern Shores project. And that's something that we kind of pride ourselves on all four of these different towns. They're all built together. We kind of see some synergies there, but they all have little intricate different designs that the towns themselves kind of dictate. So for Southern Shores, there were three primary goals. We wanted to make sure that the folks, uh, or that, that the infrastructure along the beach had sufficient protection for coastal storms. We know that, you know, typically the beach has some sort of erosion rate. There's sand moving off of the beaches along Dare County. We want to be able to keep up with that. Uh, and then in the northern section, we want to make sure, well, along the entire section, we want to make sure that there was a, a healthy, um, usable width, width of beach for, for tourists that are coming to that area. And so what that looks like in reality along the, the oceanfront, so the top of this picture is obviously pointing out towards the ocean. To the right is Kitty Hawk, to the, to the left is north to Duck. If you look at everything south of, of Fourth Street, which is that, where that white line ends on the left-hand side of the screen, those are the areas that when we did the original design, we determined needed additional protection in terms of storm damage protection. So we wanted to kind of reset the baseline, provide a little, more, more sand in those areas, reestablish those dunes that were getting scarped out, provide a, a wide enough dry sand beach that it would protect those dunes. And then goal number two is to keep up with this long-term erosion rate. So throughout the entire town, if there's erosion, we want to make sure that not only do we have that design in place, but we have sand in front of that design that's going to erode away. That's sort of a, a schedule of how much sand will be lost from year to year. And then in the northern area, like I said, that's kind of where we stress this idea where, um, the beach itself prior to the project was not, you know, sufficiently wide. We figured... We figured out what a good, you know, par would be for that, that width of beach and we went on to design a project that would achieve that width. All right, so like I said, today we want to talk a little bit about the 2025 monitoring results. We really look at two different types of analysis. So one, if you guys are familiar with building on the beach, there's something called a setback factor. When a builder decides, or when a property owner decides they want to build a structure on that beach, they have to figure out how far the shoreline is moving back on an annual basis. And so when we talk about shoreline, we're really picking one specific spot on the beach. You could go out there and find that point today. It's based on an actual elevation. And then we just compare where that point of elevation is today, where it was last year. We figure out if the beach has kind of moved landward or it's moved seaward. All right, so this is, it's important to think that we measure this spot, you know, at one point in time throughout the year, and then we compare these from year to year to year. So it really is just a snapshot. But in the center of this graph, you're seeing basically the rates that we've measured from the time the project went in, in 2022, to the latest survey that was done in June 2025. Those are rates in terms of feet that the beach has moved per year. If that, if that rate is negative, that means the beach is, basically that contour is moving closer and closer to the houses. The, the, the water's getting closer to the houses. Where you see those rates as positive, it means the beach actually built out over that time. The numbers on the right side of this screen are the same types of measurements, but now we're looking at what those rates were measured from the first survey that our firm did of the entire town in December of 2017, all the way up to rate before the project went in, in August of 2022. All right, one thing that I want to, want to explain in terms of those shoreline change rates is that this takes into consideration the survey that was done right after the beach was built. And a lot of times, right after those beaches, beach projects are built, they're built sort of wider than they need to be built because they know, we know that some of that sand is going to migrate in, out in the, out into the ocean. So this graphic kind of shows a simplistic view of that. In other words, the beach is built artificially wide, knowing that over a period of time, that some of that sand is going to move out into the offshore and, and nourish the entire portion of, of the beach. What Mr. Skinner was saying earlier, that there, there is, there is something to be said that when the sand is first placed out there, it does sort of cover up the existing bars and things like that. But, but our observations is that over the course of a year, two years, three years following this, you do get the redevelopment of those bars out there, similar trough depths, similar trough widths, things like that. So that, that process is kind of built into these shoreline change numbers. This is a very similar graph of what I showed before, but, but the numbers in the center are essentially the changes, the average changes in these three different sections of the, the town over the last year. So from 2024 to 2025, it kind of gives you a feel of, you know, was the, was the, the beach building out? Or was it, you know, getting thinner? So again, this is just shoreline change numbers. All right, now we're going to talk about the actual volume of sand. Those shoreline change numbers are good indicators. A lot of times when you have long data sets, they're, they're really helpful in trying to understand things. But right now, we really have three years of data since the project went in. I don't know if I'd categorize that as a very long-term data set to use in terms of shoreline. So the real numbers that we're interested in is these volumetric change numbers. So we survey at thousand-foot lines down the beach and then we're sort of extrapolating the volume change between each one of those lines. And we can compute, we can estimate the amount of volume that's either being gained or being lost. So again, on the left-hand side here, we've got those three different sections of the, of, of, of the beach. And then at the bottom, you've got your total numbers for the entire town. The numbers in the middle is the amount of volume that was placed mechanically by the dredge during the project in 2022 and 2023, that extra sand that was placed in May 23 is also accounted for in these tables. So that's the breakdown of how much was placed. The right-hand column tells us the amount of volume that we've seen change since the project was built. All of those numbers are positive, which means that in each of those sections and along the town, we have more sand on the beach today than we did at the completion of the beach. Now, when I say sand on the beach, we're not just talking about the upper part of the beach, that whole equilibration process that I talked about happens. But in terms of sand that we measure from the backside of the dune, over the dune, across the dry sand beach and out to about 24, 25 feet of water, if you look at that whole system, we actually have more sand in that system today than we did when the project was complete. Okay? These are similar numbers, okay? So we're still talking about volumes, but in tot, instead of total volume, we break this up into a rate. So the rate is how many cubic yards per linear foot of beach per year. It, it's hard to dissect what that means, but let's just kind of follow the trends here, all right? So if you look over in the center column, those are the numbers that we measured along each section of those beach, or each sections of the beach. If you look at the original survey we did in 2017 and the last survey that was done before the project went in, it, it, it's interesting to see that all of those numbers are positive. You might say, if you're really diving into these numbers, you might say, whoa, 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 the five years prior to us building the Southern Shores project, we actually gained sand. So why did we build a beach nourishment project if we were gaining sand during those five years? We'll talk about that in just a second. The volume change rate on the right-hand side, so now we're comparing those change rates that we saw five years before the project was built with what we've measured since the project was constructed to the most recent survey in June 2025. So in the northern area, you're actually gaining sand faster than you were the previous five years. In fact, e- even in the central and in southern section, you are gaining sand in those sections faster than you gained the previous five years prior to the project going in. All right. And then this, you, you'll notice the center numbers, those are still those five years prior to the project, just kind of trying to understand how what's happened recently compares to the baseline of before the project went in. On the right-hand side, this rate represents the changes that we saw from last year's survey in '24 to this year's survey '25. And so now, in that, in that southern section, we actually still have a positive. But in the northern and in the southern section, we are seeing negative rates over the last 12 months. And the, and the total at the bottom, the average total is also negative. All right, so what does this mean for project performance? All of these numbers seem very, very encouraging, and I, I would agree that these numbers are very encouraging. All right, so we've got another graph, it's late in the afternoon here, so bear with me as we kind of walk through this. But what we're looking at here is the, the, the change in the amount of sand on the beach. We started this, we started this graph at zero in 2017 because that's the first survey that we had of the entire beach. So it's just a way of kind of setting the baseline as 2017 and comparing everything of where we started with that first survey in 2017. The red line represents all of the volume that was measured along the entire beach. And if you wanted to follow along, if you were most interested in the north or the central or the southern, those other three lines are the trend that we saw throughout the same period of time. But let's just, let's just look at the red, the total volume first, okay? So from 2017 to 2019, and then again to 2020, we saw a negative rate of change along the entire town. In 2020 is about the time, the time that the town of Southern Shores had digested some of the original surveys that were done by our firm. We looked at some of these rates, we had some rates for the southern part of the town that went back to like 2009. And it was determined that there were some parts of the beach that were vulnerable to the design level storm that we, we used for some of the other communities. We were seeing this erosional signature in the data that we had. Then the determination was made that we should move forward with a beach nourishment project. That process of designing and preparing for the beach process, project, beach project takes about two years, all right? But in the, in the, in the following two years, we actually saw this rate go up and then go up again right before the project was built. And so in 2020, right before the, the, you know, the dredgers are already on site, that last survey actually showed that we had more sand in the system than when we started back in, in 2017. All right, this big spike here represents the, the beach nourishment project going in. And then really interestingly, the, the data between 2022 and 2023 shows another increase in volume, which is, is, is pretty unusual. All right, so what we, what we have here is from 2020, if, even if we take out the beach nourishment, in 2020 to 2021 to 2022 to 2023, we have this trend of three years in a row where naturally we've gained sand. Had nothing to do with the beach nourishment project, happened before the beach project went in, happened the year after the beach project went in. We see a similar, we see some similar trends in some of the other towns and we see it really strongly up in Currituck County where we do a similar analysis of their beach. And so we, we've sort of theorized that there's a principle that after you have a fairly stormy period of time, and I would say that, you know, starting in 2017, we never got a really direct hit here in the Outer Banks, but there were a number of storms that passed in the, in the offshore area offshore in 2017. Hurricane Dorian hit in 2019, there was some damage. That period of time was, was more stormy than a, a normal stretch of time. And then a lot of times, if you have a couple of years of, of, you know, relatively on the average quieter weather, you can see some of this sand that migrated pretty far offshore start to make its way inshore sort of slowly. And because we measure this, the, the beach, not only on the upper part of the beach, but all the way out to that 24-foot contour, if some of that sand that moved into deep water starts to move in and it's now shot, even if it's in 20 feet of water, our calculations would give us credit that we've gained sand into the system. And so when we, when we take a deep dive into the data, we believe that that's what that trend is from 2020 to 2023. It's not just in Southern Shores, it happens in other places. But since that survey was completed, again, this is the average for the entire town, we're seeing sort of a stabilization between 23 and 24. And then I showed you those negative rates on that last slide, that, that's representative of this last year from 24 to 25, all right? One more thing I want to show you, don't want to spend too much time in, in these other three curves, but you guys can take a deeper look, is if we think about where we were after the project was built, you could draw a horizontal line across this page and say, at this height, this is where the project was complete. That was all the sand that we intended to place there. And today, that, that cumulative volume is greater than what we had intended to place there in 2022. So the question of do we need beach nourishment project in 2027 isn't a crazy question, all right? It's a, it's a responsible question, should be asked. We should dive into this a little bit more and think about the pros and cons, right? We show this slide a lot and it's going to, it, 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 it's going to dovetail with this next slide that I want to show you. But we, we really tend to think of these beach nourishment projects in two different types of sand that we add to the system. One is those red lines, the design, the amount of sand that we wanted to add to the beach, either to make sure that we had this usable beach width that was sufficient up in the north area or to make sure that we had a sufficient amount of storm damage protection in the central and southern area. We want that amount of sand to stay on the beaches of Southern Shores all the time. So no matter where in a cycle the design storm might hit, you always have that level of protection in there. The variable is those green lines, the advanced fill. This is the amount of sand that we put in front of that design that we are estimating. If we estimate that perfectly, at the end of the five-year cycle or a six-year cycle, whatever it is, you've perfectly just lost the amount of sand that's shown in those green areas and you still have the design. And then the renourishment is just putting back enough extra sand to protect you for another five years. But you want to hold that design sand in place all the time. That's why the first project is always the biggest, the most expensive, because you have to put all that design sand back and the advanced fill. But in theory, future projects just deal with the advanced fill. Okay, so this is a very similar curve of that curve that I just showed everybody. If you're able to follow through this, then, then you're, you're going to have a leg up on everybody else as we walk through this. But again, with, what this curve is showing is just the, it's a little different than the red line that I showed in the last slide. What we're looking at is just the volume south of Fourth Avenue. Because that's the volume, that, that's where we, we, we believe that we needed additional storm damage protection and we were dealing with some advanced fill because we did have erosion rates or we designed for erosion rates. The reason the northern area isn't included there is because we've always seen a gain in sand. The rate has always been positive up in the southern part of Southern Shore. So there's something different about that area where there is some natural gaining of sand up there and we didn't, we didn't design for advanced fill up there. We designed for advanced fill everything south of Fourth Avenue. All right, so we're just looking at volumes. We've, again, we've set the volume that was there in 2017 to that zero point and we're, we're looking at these cumulative changes that have occurred over time, all right? So we see a little bit steeper of a loss. The loss between 2017 and 2020, if you were to draw a straight line between that, look at that slope, that represents a loss rate of about 5.3 cubic yards per foot per year, all right? That, that's how much sand was being lost in that central and southern section during these two years, the first two years when we, when we decided that we were going to design for the project. But in the, in the two years after that, right up until right before the project, we'd almost, we, we'd got, we'd gained enough volume that we were almost just about even, maybe slightly above that zero point. And then we added all of this sand to the project, okay? But if you think about this increase from this point to this point, let's think about that last slide where I showed the red arrows and the green arrows, all right? Part of that jump is your, is your red design section. Part of that jump represents the advanced fill section, right? What we've done is gone in and kind of back calculated what the, what the difference from that design and that advanced fill. And so this horizontal black line represents the amount of volume you need to keep on the beach. In other words, as long as that curve is above the black line, you have those red arrows, that design sand in place. And everything above that horizontal line represents that extra sand we've put in front of the project to protect the design amount of beach, all right? I'm going to stop for just a second. Anybody have questions about that? I'm hoping that makes, makes pretty good sense. I mean, the take home is really, you would always want, you would always want to stay above that black horizontal line. If you fall, if this curve falls below the black horizontal line, you now have less of a design, less of a design level of protection than what we originally planned the project to provide. Okay? So going back to the actual measurements, all right? We have this, 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 this big jump that represents the project. And then we had that first year where we naturally gained that sand that I was talking about, that natural trend of rebound. Since 2023, we've seen two years where we've seen consistent erosion rates of about three cubic yards per foot per year. Again, we're only talking about the volume south of Fourth Avenue. The project itself was actually designed, assuming that we were going to lose about three cubic yards per foot per year. And so what that red line show, and, and those two, these two data points from 23 to 24 to 25 actually follow three cubic yards, a linear foot pretty well, all right? So we'd say we're, we're, you know, we're, we're tracking as planned, except for that first year that was an anomaly where we gained a bunch of sand. So if we were to take that point where we were in 23, 24, 25 and project out a loss rate of three cubic yards per linear foot, we can see that in 2027, when it comes time to build the project, the next renourishment project, that red dot right there that I'm highlighting is, is not only above this black line, but that red dot is above where we were even shooting for in the beginning of the project, the 2022 project. So we're, we would be way above, you know, where, where we started after the project was constructed in '27. Right now, we're, we're, we are talking about in 2027, for the other towns, designing that project at least for five years, but maybe trying to push it out to six or seven years. Because if you can extend the interval, we could actually save money on mobilization over the long term, knowing that this is a repeat thing. You know, Duck and Kitty Hawk and Kill All Hills, they built their projects in 2017. They built them again in 2022, they needed that sand in 2022. They're going to build them again in 2027. Their projections aren't quite as, as, you know, as healthy as what we're showing here. If you looked, I looked at this last night or this morning. If you look at this point on the Kitty Hawk and the Kill If you look at this point on the Kitty Hawk and the Kill Devil Hills graphs, this point in 2025 of where we are, they they're, they are, they are both below where they were when the project was constructed in 2022. So their erosion rates are higher there. I haven't taken a deep dive into the town of Ducks. But point being is that not only would we have to get through 27, but we would have to think about, there might not be another opportunity to re-nourish until 2032. And if we are able to pu- push those other three projects out to seven years, it might be 2034 before we get another opportunity to build the Southern Shores project. If this erosion rate tracked perfectly for three cubic yards per per foot per year, all the way to that point in time, this graph shows that we would still be above that that design level protection. And perhaps, you know, the the project could push out all the way to that point in time and, you know, things would be okay, you could skip a cycle, save some money. All right, this green line here, I mentioned earlier that prior to this, you know, this sort of anomalous gain of sand, or at least what we believe was somewhat anomalous gain of sand, from 2017 to 2020, that rate was about 5.3 cubic yards per foot. Granted, we did say that that was a little bit stormier time. 2017 was somewhat of a stormy period. 2019 was Hurricane Dorian. But there's really no predict predicting what kind of storms we're going to have over the next several years. But if we look at a more conservative 5.3 cubic yards per foot per year, yes, we might be able to, we we would still be in good shape in 2027. But by the time we get to 2030, 32, you've actually fallen below that level of protection that the project was designed for. And if you go all the way to 2034, that curve continues to look a little bit worse there, all right? So this is, this is the way that I think makes the most sense in terms of framing this argument of thinking about the pros and cons of what would happen if we went beyond 2027. You know, the the next time we will get another one of these data points to sort of reevaluate how well these projections work will be probably in May of next year, 2026. So we don't really expect any new data to come along unless there was a, you know, a storm. There might be another survey done if there was a really bad hurricane or something like that. But otherwise, we'll get another data point, May, June of next year, and we'll be able to recreate these graphs. The the conundrum, I guess, that we're in right now is that in order to be eligible for that 2027 project, there is design and permitting work that needs to start now. The other three towns have signed contracts that have kind of turned us loose and we're working on the engineering design work for those those three towns now. Last month, I believe Cliff briefed you all on a change order for some funding that basically allowed us to continue to do some of that design and permitting work that also would work towards your 2027 project for, over the last month. So from the beginning of July to this point in time tonight. So I guess what we're looking for is some some decisions. I think, you know, Cliff has briefed you on some of the asks in terms of, yes, I I don't, I don't think, I don't think you have enough information right now to make a decision in terms of whether you will absolutely participate in the 2027 project. You'll be part of the signing a construction contract, the really big contracts with the dredgers. But in order to keep that option open, there's work that needs to continue to be done over the next 12 months or so. And so that's, that's kind of, you know, the the question of, you know, holding on to that eligibility, that option of doing something if it if it's necessary. With that, I will, oh, this is, this is one last slide. This just talks in terms of that northern area. Because the design was much different up there, we talked a little bit about the the width, the beach width. So this 84 feet, that is a measurement that we do from essentially the plus four-foot contour. So at any given time, we could go out there with GPSs, determine where the plus four-foot contour is. We've kind of marked it in this picture here to show you where that looks with the wet dry line. And then take that to where the plus 12-foot would be, which is pretty much where the vegetation would start or where the toe of the dune would have been. And we measured that width. And what we found was the 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 width that we all sort of agreed on would be what we wanted to shoot for was this 84. And prior to the project going in, it it had fallen to about 57. So we tried to maintain that northern area on average to about an 84-foot width. And the last survey that was conducted in June 2025 showed that that number was right around 84 feet. So we track that every year. I think last year it was like maybe, you know, high 80s, low 90s, something like that. But it's just another marker of an indicator of how the project's doing up in that northern area. With that, I think that that was my last slide, so happy to take questions.
Do we have questions for Ken? Hold on. Your presentation?
I I should say, we had a number of questions yesterday and was able to speak to Ken prior to the meeting tonight. He was able to answer and go through some of this in greater detail. The questions I have at this point are related to contract or explanations.
The only thing I was going to put out there for everyone's consideration, then I'll get to you, Richard. If we we don't have to decide go or no go on a 27 project tonight. But if there was a 2027 project for the town of Southern Shores, is it fair to say it would be of significantly smaller scale than the project that was done in 2022?
Even if, even if those, even if we didn't gain that sand, the numbers would be significant. I think the, do you know what the 2022 project cost was like 10?
10 million.
10 million. So the projection for, even without these gains of sand, the projection for the 2027 project was that it would cost $6.6 million if we went five years and it could go up to 7.6 million if we planned it for seven years. So to go from 2027 all the way to 2020, 2034. And that's because what we planned for was just putting back the 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 sand that those green arrows in that previous slide were pointing to. So if you only had to put the sand back that that the green arrows are highlighting here, you know, in inherently, the second project would be less expensive. But your question is, okay, we have this plan, this 6.6 million that we said we were going to need in 2027. If we, you know, as we're designing this right now, I I absolutely believe that that number will come down. The volume will come down. However, there's a, there's a point in which these big dredges can't come out there and put five cubic yards a linear foot along the beaches of southern shores very efficiently. There's almost like a minimum amount of sand that they can do it efficiently. So we talked about 20 cubic yards being some of, you know, one of one of those, one of those numbers that we want to get it up there. And if we didn't think that you even needed 20 cubic yards, you know, there there need to be some discussions about, you know, about that. So whether or not to move forward with it, whether, you know, so. But I, but if the, with these projections, I would assume that all the number, all the budget numbers you've been provided up until this point in time, that those numbers would probably go down because of the volume of sand you'd need to stay above this black horizontal line.
The the maintenance plan had, what, 480,000 cubic yards somewhere in there?
I think, I think the 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 five-year was like 375 and then the the, I think I got them here, 467,000, something like that was like a seven-year projection.
Like 350, 360.
So and and nowhere, of course, in your presentation is your crystal ball on whether or not we will have a major storm. I noticed you left that out.
Yeah.
There's no slide with Ken Wilson's prediction.
Not quite that arrogant.
Yeah.
So so Ken, practically speaking, if Southern Shores got out of sync with the other towns in terms of they do five years and we do seven, what what does that mean in terms of?
Yeah, so the 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 tricky part about the the synchronization is that even even without Southern Shores, if if these other towns decide to go to seven years, it needs to be that Duck, Kitty Hawk and Kill Devil Hills all could afford to put as mu- enough sand on the beach. Because if we go back to this, the that, those those green arrows would represent five years' worth of sand. But if you needed seven years' worth of sand, those those polygons, those shapes that those green arrows point to would be bigger. You need to last longer. So there, they still don't have full clarity on the resolution of could they afford to go to seven years? If they're ahead of schedule like you guys are, if their, if their numbers look better than anticipated, you know, that makes that seven-year mark easier to achieve. If their erosion rates are a little lower than where they would like to be at this point in time, that makes it a little bit harder. The dredge, the dredge climate in and of itself, whatever the industry is dictating, I mean, we were really fortunate in 2022 to get very good pricing on that. If there were a bunch of storms next year and the the dredge industry was up to capacity and it was really hard to get contractors, those rates can go up pretty significantly, which might mean we got to scale down on some some volumes of sand. So there's a, there's a lot of decisions that are still going to need to be made between the the four towns. Typically, what we've done for the previous projects is that around this time, I think we've we've had some preliminary discussions about maybe starting these meetings in September. But there is staff and representatives from all four towns and we'll come in and kind of give updates similar to this for all four of the towns, talk about where we are with the permitting, where we are with the design. And on a quarterly basis throughout the year, keep all four towns updated so that they not only understand the dynamics of themselves, but they would understand, you know, what you guys are wrestling with, what the other towns are wrestling with. And knowing that there, there's a lot of cost savings associated with all four of you working together. But we are, we are seeing, you know, why this can't be done everywhere all the time because it it can get very complicated.
The feedback on Paul's comment, if we missed the 2027 cycle and then a large storm, we would say, well, we lasted seven years, our project outperformed. If we tried to mobilize in 2029, it would be financially unfeasible for us as a solo town to do that.
So to give kind of.
Without FEMA reimbursement.
Right, to give kind of round numbers on that, I I think the estimate that we have built into the 2027 project is a mobilization cost for the dredges of like $8 million. So the the, all four towns share that mobilization cost. If you guys were to do it alone, you know, you'd pay the full mobilization plus the cost of the sand, which is what Matt's saying, it makes it financially infeasible.
So this is an insurance policy with a big deductible?
You know, that that really is. That's absolutely the way to think about all of this.
Going forward with the information and then the deductible comes at the end whenever we have to do the the project.
Exactly.
Is that, and and if you don't work with the other towns, the cost is astronomical.
Correct.
Well, the other thing that's.
Simple, yeah.
I guess it's hard to recreate the conversations that we had with Ken yesterday. I'm making an effort. We talked about scope your contract, task three and whatnot. And I first read that and I was thinking, oh, this, working on engineering the next project, it's really not. Some of it is building a model that integrates all the town shorelines together, all four of them. And that model may inform that we don't need to participate in 2027, you know? But it it's part of us being part of the Dare County project overall to 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 help build that scientific backup. Is that a fair way of saying that?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Well, the the mayor and town manager and I rode the beach today. And it was really startling to me how different areas of the beach are just very different. You know, I live at 66. I have a big dune, much bigger than I had last year. Thanks to Lynn and Barb, I have a lot of grass behind our house and we have a very wide beach. But other sections of Southern Shores were very different.
I kind of look at this as the old Fram oil filter. For those of you who know that that ad that was on TV, either pay me now or pay me later. So in other words, we we're making a a short-term investment, meaning kind of buying the oil filter so the the whole engine doesn't break, break down later on, meaning the whole cost of of beach nourishment in 2034, whatever else would fall on the town. So it's a short-term investment for hopefully a long-term gain and a cost avoidance.
Okay, Richard, you still game?
Yes, ma'am.
What you got?
Well, basically, you're, you're going now, it's obvious you go to have a crystal ball to look at the weather. So I'll just quickly bypass that. Are your measurements, I have to assume that all the gains they are taking from the mean high water?
So the question, just for the recording, is do the measurements include the gain from the mean high water?
Right.
Okay.
So those shoreline change numbers that I showed in the beginning, those first two, this one and this slide, that is more looking at what you're talking about, the mean high water line. Although something that we've done in terms of this shoreline change analysis, the mean high water line, for those of you that, you know, that are out there on the beach all the time, I mean, the mean high water line on Friday is in a much different place than it is right now, okay? So if you were to measure just four days apart, five days apart, you you'd see, you know, big differences and you don't want to make rash decisions on that. We actually, instead of using that mean high water line, we we measure from the six-foot contour, which is a little higher up on the beach. It's a little bit more of a stable contour to use. It's also the elevation of where they built the berm when they, when the, when the dredge is left and you had this big flat, perfectly flat, you know, unnatural-looking, you know, beach platform. That's the elevation they built to. So we purposely try to take some of that variability out by only looking at the, at the, or looking at a higher contour, the six-foot contour. But all of these volume numbers that I'm showing here, that's actually looking at the entire profile. You know, if you had one curve that went all the way from the back of the dune, over the dune, across the dry sand beach and out into 20 feet of water, and you could see that as a curve, and then you had one for 2022, and then you had one for today, you're basically looking at, you know, you're integrating all the areas between those two curves and figuring out where you've lost sand and gained sand. So these volumes are really looking at, if you lost sand in the dune, it would show up in here. If you lost sand in 12 feet of water, 15 feet of water, right on the dry sand beach, it's all integrated into one number in these big tables.
How about the volume? The volume is the whole.
The volume is everything. The shoreline change is just looking at that plus six-foot contour, correct?
Okay, any any other questions, counsel?
Well, I just have a question. So let's just say it's 27 that we're working on right now. And you're getting all the permits, 10 permits, if I read the contract here, major permits and four from the federal government. Space agency have to be in on this.
I don't think they commented on it, but.
Anyway, anyway, with that, let's just say collectively, the four municipalities say, you know what, we don't need it in 29. Do you have to go and reapply again for all these permits in 29?
That's a real good question.
Does it just roll forward?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So I'd say for, let's simplify this in terms of state permits, because we get it. There are a lot of agencies that review that, that's where the 10 different agencies come from. But essentially, we get a permit from the state of North Carolina through the Division of Coastal Management and a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. The permit from the Division of Coastal Management usually has a five-year clock on it. When we issue, when we get that permit, we have five years to do the work. However, if if that, if that permit was not used, the action hasn't been taken, it would be a very straightforward process to simply renew that permit and use it two years later or something like that, if we didn't use it in the five years that we had. So it'd be a very, a very minimal effort to renew that permit if it wasn't used. The Corps of Engineers permit would be similar, but we've actually had some conversations with the Corps and with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management where we're trying to write some of these environmental documents to not only apply to this upcoming project, but potentially the next project, like a 2032 or 2034 project and a potential storm that could happen in between. Because if a storm happened in, if you built the project in 27 and a storm happened in 28, you probably wouldn't wait till 2032 or 2034 to fix the beach. You know, you'd get FEMA funds and you'd try to fix it as quick as possible. So that that scenario is also being built into these environmental documents. And, you know, sometimes you can, you you could try to plan that, you know, there are some, some communities that have looked at these programmatic events for 30 years, but so many things change that they end up having to come redo a lot of those environmental documents anyway. We we feel like this is a really nice middle ground. If the agencies really will sort of like clear us for two different events, that's, that's pretty good. So there is value in some of the effort that we're going to be doing. Not only the, you know, the analysis effort that that Matt was talking about, but the environmental effort would actually carry over to a future project.
You good?
Yeah.
Anyone else? All good? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. And you're.
Happy to be here.
Your info very much. So Cliff, what what you're asking counsel to do tonight? So Cliff, what you're asking counsel to do tonight is to-
One, authorize us to add $15,000 to task one so we can continue, and then under task two A and two D, those are the tasks that Ken was talking about that we need to do to get to the point where we can make a decision, and we need to start that now. That's $96,406.48. So we're asking for a total of $111,406.
And then we will have this on the agenda at the September meeting, and we can, so that gives us a month to do further thinking about what we want to do.
Task three.
Which is, yeah, the rest of the descriptions here of what tasks are left. And just to emphasize, we do not have to make a decision about the 2027 project until-
Let's drop it.
Captain, next to your survey.
Yeah, I mean, right.
For sure, after May of 2026.
Yeah, late spring, summer.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Counsel, does anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve spending $111,406 to complete tasks two C?
Two A.
Two D. Two A and-
Two D.
Two D.
And task one.
And add $10,000.
Add $15,000 for-
Task one.
Task four.
Okay. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Rob is seconding. Any further discussion at this time?
I have a question. Where's this money coming from?
Okay, where's the money coming from?
Beach Nursery Capital Reserve.
The Capital Reserve.
Beach Nursery Capital Reserve.
And Bonnie says we can cover it?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. All right. Great question, Paul.
Should we amend this to say the money comes from Beach Nursery Capital Reserve?
I like that.
Be funded by Beach Nursery Capital Reserve, which we have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's great. Thanks, Mark. All right. I think we're there. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. Next on our list of new business items is public hearing for fire truck finance, page 36 in your book, counsel. I think Cliff is going to take care of this.
So this is somewhat similar to the LGC's requirement for the public hearing on the, assuming the loan for the fire department. This kind of takes the same path, except this doesn't require LGC approval. But we need to have, since it's an installment financing, purchase of general statutes require you have a public hearing before you can authorize that. So the last step in this is the public hearing on the funding.
Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to Robert to conduct the public hearing. Thank you, Cliff. Anybody have any, before Robert starts, any questions for Cliff about what we're getting ready to do? Okay, Robert.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This time, we're going to open the public hearing as required by section 168-20 of the North Carolina General Statutes to consider the approval of a contract to refinance the loan on the T-12 E1 custom aerial ladder truck operated by the Southern Shores Fire Department and to authorize the related funding and the execution of the contract. So the public hearing is open. If you would like to, no one has signed up, but if somebody would like to speak to this matter, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, please. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn it back to the council to deliberate and consider the approval of the funding and execution of the contract.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it. Counsel, are there any questions? Do we need to discuss this, or are we ready to make a motion and vote? Ready.
Ready.
We will own this fire truck at the end of the paper.
Hopefully, right?
That's right. Is it right?
I'll ask the same question.
It's leased, just is it leased now? But it's a lease-to-buy, is that what I, is the way I read it? Lease-to-buy, okay. Or lease-own, I'm sorry, lease-own.
Lease-to-own.
All right. And then is it outdated? What's the, I'm curious, what's the life on it? I'm curious, what's the life on it?
Thirty years on it. One year.
And how many years old is it now?
It's four.
Four, okay. All right, perfect, okay.
I'll ask the same question we asked Bonnie last time. Bonnie, we have enough money to cover it?
Yes, ma'am, we have the money for the debt service payment in the fire department's budget.
Perfect.
And we paying the same interest rate?
No.
No?
No.
No, in order for us, if this had been a simple transfer, then yes, but in order to, in order to do the refinancing, the rate did go up. Presently, it was about 100, I'm not sure what the rate changed from, but the payment all total is about $49,000 additional interest at the end of the six years, because we're assuming this. Payment goes from about $116,000 to $122,000, I think. Well, it's whatever.
Okay.
Opportunity cost.
Yeah, transition cost.
Yeah, how much is a new truck?
New trucks are what, $2 million, chief?
And three years out?
Chief Lindbacher, how much is a new truck?
Uh, well-
$2 million?
Eighty-five. So I would think by the time we buy the engine in three years, we'll be $2 million.
Million plus? Okay.
Now, the ladder truck's $1,500,000, which right now will be $1.55.
Okay. Give or take.
Same truck.
And the waiting time?
Three.
Three years.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
See opportunity.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the town manager execute all required documents in order to finance the ladder truck.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. We're buying the ladder truck. Okay. New business number six, consideration of application for advanced assistance as part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, page 48 in your books. Cliff?
What we're asking for is the ability to apply for some funds that'll pay for the necessary survey work, it'll pay for 100% of the survey work, all the design elements, everything that you pay for to do, to get a project ready, shovel ready to go. This grant will pay for that. The advanced assistance, again, is just like the HMGP grant. Federal government pays 75%, state pays 25%. We've been working with the coordinator of this program at emergency management. He's encouraged us to apply for these fundings that he thinks this project will fit that. And again, this project is, it's in the vicinity of Sea Oaks Trail, and it can be shared with the town of Duck to address stormwater issues within the general vicinity of the northern limits of Southern Shores and the southern limits of Duck. Though the thing that makes this so positive is we are partnering with Duck. And I think the, one thing to note is hazard mitigation, that we're not only designing this for now, but we're designing it for the future to keep that road open in the case of emergencies, as we know, the only way up and back. So that's a big part of this grant. And so what I'm asking for is to be able to continue. At this point, we're about $250,000, $300,000 that we'd be requesting for the grant assistance, but the total grant project would come back before you for approval. We'd have to get you all to pass a resolution that says we're going to hear all the federal rules for about 25 different requirements. But for now, I'm just looking for authorization to be able to apply for the advanced assistance.
Very good. Questions for Cliff?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is great. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute documents associated with the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program's Advanced Assistance Application.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, last but not least, is a last-minute budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am. We have a 2018 Ford F-150 that's, a police officer's been using for patrol. That engine blew a cylinder, and we need to replace the engine on that. It's a $17,000 cost to replace this. This 2018, it has 46,000 miles, so it's out of warranty year-wise, but it only has that few a miles, and so we feel like it's worth salvaging this car and getting more years out of it. This, if I'm, a similar vehicle like this, unoutfitted is about $45,000 now. So it kind of just makes sense for us to do this. But it's so early in the budget year, you know, we're asking for fund balance because we haven't found the money yet, from laps, whatever. So we're asking to be able to have you all approve a budget amendment in the amount of $17,000 to replace this engine. Anything to add?
So on fund of balance, where you're going to spend it now, you may change it back later.
Hopefully, may recuperate.
If we don't, yeah, if we find savings this year during the budget.
Okay.
You do think it's worth to put the engine in and get a new truck?
I do. It's the nice older black and white one.
Yeah. I've had that truck, and I've had similar engine issues with it. It's not, a new engine may not, might have come back again.
It's Brian and Jesse, which if anybody's ever been on court, that's how you have to all the stages of the courts.
Yeah.
But we'll keep that truck, we'll find another separate.
Okay, it's worth it.
So there's no rust or anything? I mean, not bad at all? Yeah, okay.
It's aluminum body.
All right.
All right, so motion to approve town manager and executing the budget amendment as previously described.
So moved.
$17,000.
$17,000, amount of $17,000. Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Very good. All right. Counsel business. Who wants to go first?
I'll talk about the tour board real fast. Rental income is up through June. Meals income is up through June. It's over budget. It's nicely over budget this year so far, and we're up 11.88% on occupancy collections, and we're up 7.10%. We did budget conservatively this year. Nobody knew what this year was going to be like, but it seems to be turning out pretty well, and based on traffic counts that we're hearing from the police department and watching what's going on, I mean, I'm hearing nothing but good reports up and down the beach as well.
You said the June is up 11.88 year-over-year?
Yeah.
That's not over forecast, that's year-over-year? That's awesome.
That's what's up, yeah. So there's, occupancies are, you know, they're here, and that's, it's good news. I just hope it comes into, we get our share of it, when it comes due, right, Bonnie? I hope we do.
Yeah, we should receive it next week.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we'll find out. All right.
Good answer.
Paul? I'm good.
Okay. Mayor Patel?
Yes, we are, sorry, my calendar went blank. We have a corridor meeting August 12, 9:00 a.m. here in this room, and we are starting to draft together our Phase One report, which is based on survey results. We're not quite to conclusions yet, but we're going to gather all our stakeholder input and put that together in a report that we're targeting mid-fall to deliver to council. This is an all-volunteer effort. There's no consultant being paid. I think everybody on the committee deserves a cat pat on the back for the heavy lifting they've been doing, and I appreciate all their efforts. I don't have the date 100%, but I will also be going to Chapel Hill as my role as part of the Dare County Housing Task Force to attend another Our State Our Homes Forum in the first of September, I think, after our next council meeting. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Matt. Rob?
As the towns rep on, for current TV, nothing of earth-shattering significance. The one thing that we are doing is when we meet almost monthly, we are going to, we've always met down in Manio, but we're going to rotate around the location of the meetings. So I'd like to, maybe in the fall, have the meeting here at Pitt Center, and this month, excuse me, the 12th of this month, we're actually meeting down in KDH. So probably the folks in the communities down the beach will have to have their passport stamped to come up this part of the beach. But in addition, as the towns rep for the anniversary of the 250th signing of the Declaration of Independence, things are cranking along. You'll hear much, much more about it, but nothing worth going into, you know, further detail at this time.
Thanks, Rob. In light of Saturday's traffic event, I just want to reassure anyone who's listening that as a member of the Long Range Tourism Management Plan Committee, I continue to make the point that the Visors Bureau should allocate funding to promote check-in days any day but Saturday. It's kind of my new, that's my new motto, is any day but Saturday, because what we had Saturday was too many cars on too few roads. And last but not least, very briefly, if you all just take a minute to look around the room at the beautiful art that's on the walls here of the Pitt Center, and also out in the, I guess, sort of semi-forier area there, all of this art has been donated to the town by individuals, by members of our community. And recently, there was a really pretty tapestry that was donated by someone who, she didn't donate it because she passed away, but in her last request, she asked that that particular tapestry be donated to the town. And staff has graciously got it wonderfully displayed, and so I thank them for that. And just when you have a chance, note the pretty art that we have. All right, enough about that. There needs to be a motion, and let me see if I can read it correctly, that we go into closed session per NCGS 143-318.11A6, Personnel Matters.
Let me, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll just read the full statutory provision, then you can adopt that as your motion.
Perfect.
That your motion is to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A6, to consider the qualification, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance power against an individual, public officer, or employee.
Thanks, Robert. There's the motion. Do you have a second? Second, motion second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. We're in closed session. Thanks, everyone.